Good evening. Welcome to the City of Gilbert City Council meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, July 11th, 2023. The time is 6:15 PM. I got it right. Roll call.
Thank you. I have Councillor Ponten in.
Here.
Councillor Heitzman. Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councillor Polis.
Here.
Councillor Skinsich.
Here.
I also have Chief of Police, City Engineer, Operations Director, Campground Manager, and myself, Clerk Soller.
Chief.
Oh, and sorry, but Chief, oh, boy, Kaiwetowski is here. Can I just say Kaiwai? Is that okay?
Thank you. We have a quorum.
It does.
Would please stand, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Approved additions?
Yes, there are a few of them on your little list in front of you. I have, under Old Business, Resolutions 2023-15, 2023-16, 2023-17, under New Business for Parcel Purchase Proposals, 2023-18 and 19, and then I have a Planning and Zoning Permit for Approval at 101 India Avenue West, for offense.
I'll move.
All right. Moved by Councillor Polis, supported by Councillor Heitzman. Any further discussion?
All of these have been looked at by our attorney.
These are all prior approvals. We were just waiting on actual documentation. And then the 2023-20 is Authorization to Make Application, Accept Funds for IRRB, which we did in 2023, but we're reapplying for 2024. And then it's just a motion for us to sign after the fact, so.
That's all I have.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, 5-0. And since those are on the agenda, correct? So we'll bring them up then. Okay, you consent agenda?
Move.
Moved by Councillor Polis, or supported by Councillor Heitzman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, 5-0. Do we have any public input? No public input. I have just a few notes I'd like to say. Over the Fourth of July, I hope everybody had a fun and safe Fourth of July. Even though I sweated, but we pulled off the Kitty Parade and the races afterwards, thanks to the Fire Department stepping up and coming out and helping. And I want to thank all the other volunteers that showed up and helped to make it accessible. Kids enjoyed it and got a lot of good compliments. So I am going to plead to the public. If there's anybody that can step up and take over running it or organizing it for next year, please let the city know or let myself know. I'll help you in any way I can. But it's really a handful trying to organize it and collect all the everything to get it set up and stuff. So if somebody in the city wants to take it over, please step up. I'd greatly appreciate it. I want to thank the Third of July Committee for the parade. That was really nice setup. It got a lot of compliments on it. And it seemed like it was bigger this year than it was last year, and it ran pretty smoothly. And that's all I have. I want to thank Sammy for the work he's doing and prepping around the public works. It's looking good down there. Thank you. That's all I have. Councillor Ponten?
I don't have anything tonight.
Councillor Heitzman?
Nothing at this time, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Polis?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on, I went down and checked out the splash pad zone. I always never hit it right. Anyway, they're still working on it. They've been working on it since eight o'clock this morning, getting every piece of structure in there. And they're about maybe halfway done right now. It's taken about two hours just to get the trampoline in there. So they're working on that and it looks pretty good. So hoping they're going to have it going by Friday, I believe, is what they said. And I also like to comment on the Third of July Committee for doing an outstanding job. I spoke with the ladies while we were waiting for the parade to get started, trying to get everyone organized. It's quite a task. And also thanking Gilbert PD for handling all the crowd because there was quite a bit of kids all over the place. So it was a good turnout and we appreciate everyone for coming out. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councillor Skinsich?
I've got, I think, two things here, anyway. One, I kind of like to talk about the new facelift for the City Hall and the Fire Department and such. Police Department looks great. There were a lot of positive comments. That turned out very, very well. The only question I have, and we kind of discussed this a little bit last night at our fire meeting, if there's something we can do, whether it's a little retaining wall or some stairs, going from like the doorway of the Fire Department towards the sidewalk of the side street? If you look at that, I mean, the building, the soil's really low. And I mean, there were some things thrown out. Like I say, a stairway of some sort. I know some people have slipped just going down that little grassy hill into the fire hall. Or, you know, a little retaining wall of some sort, just to make it look nice. It's not that big of an area. Really wouldn't take much dollar-wise. And I think there'd be enough of us available to do the labor part of it. The other thing was kind of aimed at Ty a little bit. Patrolling up above Hopkins Park. I brought this up a little earlier. I took a ride up there, and this is a couple of weeks ago. And there was, there was one individual that came wandering out of somewhere. I have no idea. And I was just wondering if you could, have you had any problems up there? I know that, I don't think the gates are being shut, and that's not going to stop somebody from walking up there anyhow, but.
Yeah, so we did have some problems. We had three burglaries in town. The individual was in custody about two weeks ago. They broke into the school. It would have been, it would have been the weekend of Virginia Celebration, it's called, with Land of the Loon. They stole, somebody stole a golf cart from Land of the Loon and drove it to Gilbert. They did a burglary at the high, at the school. They attempted to get into the Catholic Church. And they did a burglary down on Lower Dakota at Trails End Lodging. That was the day we had a pretty heavy law enforcement presence. We had canines in town. We ended up tracking them down. He broke into the cemetery. I'm not sure which building that was. Either it was upper building or lower building. Broke in there. They ended up getting him into custody. So he was probably the one that was living up there, too. We do have a little bit of a homeless problem between Gilbert and Beowabik right now. Gilbert's got probably four to five people that are homeless right now, living on the banks of Orbigan. They also head out towards Genoa. So we've got them taking the tracks coming down there. We've got most of them identified. We know who they are. Once it gets cold, they usually jump a train in Virginia and then head back south. So they'll jump the train. So it just seems to be, for some reason, they like Orbigan and the surrounding area. So we've had a few people up there. But yeah, I think the problem that you're talking about, I think that might have been resolved because we recovered the stolen golf cart actually up at the Hopkins Park. So it was actually belonged to the Virginia Golf Course, so we did return that. So this individual actually then stole another golf cart on Friday night and drove it to Hibbing, stole an ATV. And this would have been a week prior. And actually drove the ATV, I believe, all the way to Michigan and back. Like 1,100 miles he put on the machine stolen, and they got it, they recovered it. So this kid was on a pretty, he's still on the jail roster. So he had quite the one-week thing, but somehow he ended up in Gilbert. It's really, but we tracked it down to his, he had a girlfriend that lives in town here. So you're right, we did have some problems up there. I think it's gotten better. But I'll let the officers know to take a few more runs up there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, other than that, no, the Third of July I thought went really well. It was nice to see the sidewalks full of people. And I got to drive. It was probably my last year driving. And a lot of candy, and it was fun. Councillor Heitzman and I actually went in there, but.
We got to ride it a fire engine.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
It was pretty fun. Otherwise, yeah, good job, city crew and police and Third of July Committee. Thank you. That's all.
So Jeremy, on that retaining wall that you're talking about?
Yeah.
How are you, do you have like a design? Would you kind of step down as you follow the grade of the sidewalk?
That's what we were thinking.
Would you step it down like?
Yeah, maybe start three high, go down to two and go down to one. There's, we really haven't thought of anything specific, just that if nobody was objecting to it, we'd move forward and come up with something.
Just to be clear, Bob, it's not, it's not parallel to the sidewalk. It's parallel to the front of the building.
Oh.
As that, as that, as that hill comes down from the sidewalk, it kind of peters out as it gets toward the mandor and the foam, you know, insulation is exposed.
Yeah, I see what you're, oh, I got you. I thought maybe you were going to put a retain wall so nobody can walk down that slope. That I do all the time. Take a shortcut right there.
If you don't do that in Crocs, when there's a little bit of snow, there's.
That was, that's been on the scope before, too. And that's where it would be nice to have a set of stairs going up there, you know, wide sets, so you can actually use that. Whether it's a short little sidewalk going to the sidewalk then for that whole parking strip.
Yeah. But would you restrict your parking, though, if you put up stairs protruding into that parking area?
No, not there. Not where we want to do it.
Okay.
The only thing it would do was change the way it would get plowed because now all that snow just gets pushed.
Pushed against the sidewalk.
Pushed south. They'd have to change a little bit on that, but that's.
Right.
Minor.
Wow, okay.
That's okay.
And yeah, we've got faith in you.
So, no, that was all.
We got you a snow blower, right? You'll be all right. Borrow it from the school. It'd be good.
But that was all. There was nothing, no objections. Maybe something we move forward with, come up with some kind of design or whatever.
Right.
Yeah, see what you guys want at the Fire Department and.
Big dollar, it's pretty inexpensive. It would just be, the other thing, I guess, to look at, if we did stairs, we'd probably have to have handrails of some sort. You know, it'd be one or two stairs, probably two stairs, but.
Yeah, I think you could use it because over by that, by the door is, could use some TLC.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to Staff Boards and Commissions Reports. Fire Chief?
Good evening, all. First off, I want to thank the citizens of Gilbert and neighboring towns for coming to the Third of July. We had a record year at our annual fundraiser. So thank you very much for your patronism. Also, to our crew, we had lots of help. That's always hard to come by. So we thank our crew and family members for helping get ready for it. Also, Kitty Parade and stuff, I had a blast down there. I know it's a lot of work and stuff, but Tom and I got to hand out money. And these kids, the smile on these kids' face was.
It's priceless.
It was priceless, so. Last night at our meeting, we had an applicant come in for an interview. So I'm looking for your approval to hire Brandon Kuch, I think it's spelled, as firefighter. He was cleared by a background check, but it would have to be, if he passes a physical.
I'll move.
It's part. Moved by Councillor Polis, supported by Councillor Heitzman. Any further discussion?
How do you spell his last name, Brandon?
K U C H, I believe it is.
K U C H.
Or K O C H. Okay, now how do you pronounce it? He told me it sounds like duck, but with a K, so.
Kuck.
Kutch.
Kutch. Kutch. It's pronounced, like Mark said, like duck, but it's hot with a K in it. It's K U, like, almost like K U C K, but it's K U C H.
Okay, cuck.
We'll be good at that.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, 5-0 to go ahead and hire Brandon Kuck.
Very good, thank you. That'll be, that'll bring us to 20. That's the first time in four years we've been at 20 firefighters on a department, so that's exciting. We're looking for more applicants as we have six members that can retire within the year, so hopefully we get a couple more applicants here soon. My second thing I'm looking to do is, as I said before, there was going to be some stuff with this ladder truck that we needed. I finally got pricing on the rest of the stuff that we need for it. Not only are lead times on stuff long, but apparently lead times on pricing is getting long, too. So I've been waiting on this for a while, and I apologize. It came in yesterday, so I brought it into Jill this morning, and you didn't have it in your packet, so I'm sorry about that. But the first one is, I budgeted for five-inch fittings to go on this truck. Our last ladder truck had four-inch LDH with four-inch fittings. This one has five, the same as our engine, too. So we're going to need some new fittings totaling $1,195. Want me to do all of them before you go, or one at a time?
Just do them all, right?
Yeah, I think you can do them all.
Okay. The second one is, we purchased a thermal imaging camera, but we forgot to buy the mobile charger for inside the truck. So that was approved before, but I thought I'd bring it up. That's $763. Then also, we're looking at buying a Blitzfire. Blitzfire is, kind of saves us on a big structure fire. It's a little machine that goes, sits on the floor, hooked to a two-and-a-half-inch hose. And usually we have two or three firefighters sitting on that hose. With this deal, it's turn it on and walk away. There's no firefighters. And, you know, as you, as you guys know, it's less and less at a fire call, so that would, that would free up three firefighters to do other jobs on there. So all this, this was due, is you will put it on the side of a building or whatever for exposure, and, but it's worked. So that's $3,525. That's all I have for you guys tonight.
I'll move. It's part.
Moved by Councillor Polis, supported by Councillor Heitzman. Any further discussion?
Just note that it's all budgeted, so.
Yep.
It's all budgeted, so.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, 5-0 to go ahead with the approval of the purchase of the Blitzfire combination for the amount of $3,525 and the.
Tick charger.
The truck charger for $763. And then the items in the amount of 1,195?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Two more quick things. I did want to thank the public for coming down to our open house for Ladder 23. It was very well attended. A lot of people, we were surprised and happy to see them and got a lot of great feedback, and that was, that was nice. Nice to see everyone. Also, a reminder, this Friday is a free concert down here from The Crawl for the Cure. 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM, the band will be playing down at the, outside the arena, so stop on down, listen to some free music. Thank you. That wasn't me this time.
Before you leave, Chief, one last thing. The open house, everybody that I've talked to since the truck showed up, including the parade, everybody loves the orange and black fire engine. It is fantastic. So hats off to our committee for doing that. That's.
Bob?
I don't know if you want to bring this up here, talk about this tonight, but about the coverage for McKinley, you know, because they disbanded their fire department, right?
So. Yeah, so I know, it's all hearsay. I actually talked to Chief Nygaard from Beowabik Township. Apparently, they abolished their department, and McKinley did. And they're looking at hiring, paying Beowabik Township to cover that area. I don't know, I don't know if you guys are attorneys for them, but apparently it was the attorney's decision to do that, reliability-wise, so I don't really know much on it. Obviously, if there's a structure fire, we're, we always get called over there.
Mutual aid, even though they don't have a fire department, you still provide mutual aid.
Yeah, and that has to be looked into through our coalition, East Range Coalition. There's 18 departments in that coalition. We're all in a mutual aid agreement. This may be different, I don't know, being that it's hired out. The only other, the only other place that's hired out is Virginia Fires, hired by Cleveland Cliffs to cover their mining companies out here. But still, we're on mutual aid, but M calls, too, so I don't really think there's going to be a problem. I don't know.
That's all I have.
All right. Anything else?
We'll let you know after the coalition talks about that, what you find out for providing that mutual aid to a, it's no more, it's no longer mutual.
Yeah. The next coalition meeting, I believe, is in a couple of weeks, so I'm sure that'll come out there. So I'll keep you.
Thanks, Chief.
Rest on it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Ah, that's interesting. First I heard of that, actually.
Oh, really?
And move on with City Attorney Lindsey.
Hey, Mayor, no formal report, but I am happy to field any questions that the council may have for me.
Thank you. Chief Teacher?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I usually have the monthly report, but we're almost two weeks behind reports. Fourth of July went pretty well, Third of July. Nothing out of the usual, your usual intoxicated people, a couple of trips of detox, nothing major. So I think we only put two or three in jail over that entire weekend, so it was pretty good. Street dance was very quiet. We only had, I think we had two fights at the street dance, and they weren't even much of fights, so pretty minor. The only thing I do have is, we've been getting a fair amount of complaints on Highway 97 in Sparta area all the way towards Elik Drive of heavy truck traffic. And it's obviously very heavy this year. You've got a couple of different contractors working out of the same area. Couple of the questions, a couple of the complaints have been about the Jake braking, using dynamic brakes, however you want to call it. Gilbert does not have an ordinance stating that you cannot use any type of transmission brakes or engine retarders or anything like that, so. The complaints, I think there were a couple of trucks that were issues. I worked two days out there, kind of come and go. You know, the problem is you go out there, you stop one truck, or you're out there for five, 10 minutes. By the time it gets through the radios, every truck knows about it. So try to go out there and just hit it for five minutes, get out of there, go back. So a lot of trips out there. I did have a commercial vehicle inspector with me for two of the days. We did stop a couple of trucks. Of course, you know, not real happy about stopping them, but I think it's only a couple of trucks that are real bad. And I think the contractor, I spoke with one of the foremen and asked him to take care of the problem. And I didn't get any more complaints, but I don't know if it's changed much to speeds. Same thing, I went out unmarked, sat out, actually off a driveway. And they're just not, they're not speeding. But the engine braking, I think, coming in, coming down the hill is a problem with a couple of them. But we do not have an ordinance, so I could not, I really have no, we were stopped on based on with the CVI for basically, for inspections. But if we have an ordinance in place, and I don't know if the council's interested in it, maybe this year it's just going to be a bad year, but I think with the two pits there, I think there's probably a couple of years of the trucks. And I don't think it's so much the local trucks. It seems like we're getting some trucks all the area, some contractors, and they seem like they've got some, a couple of pretty annoying trucks. So I don't know if the council's interested in working on a ordinance. There's really not anything we can do this year about it because it'll take 30 days to do a reading and everything else. But it's something that I don't, I wouldn't be against having on the books. So at least if I do have a problem, I can actually do something about it instead of just stop and warn and try to, basically, we try to fall under the 169.69 statute, which is mufflers are required. Well, they have mufflers. It's just they have the dynamic braking. Of course, the argument is we're burning brakes up twice as fast, whatever else. But I think if, and the first thing, when the first guy stopped, first thing I was mouthless, you have no signs posted prohibiting Jake braking. And I think Jake braking has gotten better because of newer trucks, especially the over-road trucks. Most of them have got the baffles in them, so it takes care of the problem. I know you live on, I mean, I can hear them from my house some nights, you know, and I'm three blocks in, so.
I never hear them.
Oh, really? So I would, I would like, I would like to have some work done in the books, just in case this becomes more of a problem. At least I can do something about it. Because right now, I'm making stops, and there's really, I don't really have anything I can do about it. I guess that's why I brought the CVI in, because, you know, we don't want any inconvenience, these guys are trying to make a living and stuff like that. But it's kind of that negotiating, like, my understanding is, from what one of the truckers said, they've got three, two, one, or three different dials, they can dial them up or down. And, you know, even if they put it down to one, but I know what happens is usually when we start stopping them, then if they don't see us around, then they intentionally start doing it. And there's always that one or two truck drivers that do it. And then it's a matter of trying to catch them. But this, if there is a problem, then at least we have some teeth. Like, I can actually do something about it instead of just giving them idle threats, basically, which means that nothing's going to change. But, but they don't like when the CVI comes in because obviously, you know, that, that can lead to other issues, so. But we want our roads fixed, too, but there's been heavy traffic this year. And I've taken, I want to say, five complaints. I had one just yesterday come in about the speed. I don't see the speed, I just don't see those trucks. Maybe they are, but I don't see those trucks going fast enough. Today I clocked them, fastest one I had was 57 by Deep Lake coming down the hill. Most of them are 40s, in the 40s, actually. So they're not ripping that fast, but they see me, too, so. And they're, they're on their radios pretty quick, so. So I don't know if that's something that the council's interested in, So I don't know if that's something that the council's interested in, if they want me to work on drafting them. They're pretty easy to draft, then all you gotta do is put signs up at each border of the city limit, stating that no dyna, I think the new term is dynamic braking, instead of engine retarders. So we just basically put something out in an ordinance, and then we just have to put signs up. So the cost would be minimal, we'd probably have a couple hundred dollars in signs, but if there's problems, at least gives me some, it gives me something, I can do something about it. Right now, I really can't, so, I'm not sure if the council's interested in that. I can draft, League of Minnesota cities has some pretty decent model policies, it'd be nothing for us to just put our stuff on, and the council look at it, so I don't know if the council's interested or not, so.
I'm in favor of that.
A question, can you do it in a resolution form, Brian? You can't, it has to be ordinance.
Mayor, can I?
Yes.
In order to be enforceable, and for the chief to be able to issue citations pursuant to a violation, it would need to be codified as an ordinance.
Okay.
The beauty, the beauty of it, with the ordinance too, is now with us having body cameras, there's nothing better than even when we write loud exhaust tickets on trucks, when you have your windows up, and you hear the rapping through the windows, and our body cams pick it up, it's pretty hard to argue that this is a problem, it's annoying. So, so yeah, so if that's what the council wishes, I would appreciate it, because then I, instead of just telling people, well, we'll do our best, but now I can literally go out and actually do something about it, so.
Reach out to Procter, they have one.
Okay.
And they have signs when you come into town, actually, that say, no Jake braking.
No Jake braking.
Either certain times or certain places, but they've, they've had them for a while, because they had that same issue, so.
Okay.
So, another question, you know, this is a sound issue. So when you stop somebody for, without a muffler, or whatever, do you give them a decibel reading, you know, so then you cite them according to the decibel reading that you get? Do you have an instrument that you can...
So we do have an instrument, but that falls under, basically, the Pollution Control Agency stuff. It's a totally different citation, we can issue under that, but the problem with that is, we have to have, there are a couple thousand dollars for a court certified one, they gotta be calibrated, so that, however, under Minnesota state statute, the ordinance is very, very plain, it's very, basically, it says that it's, I'm paraphrasing, that the muffler has to blend in with the overall noise of the vehicle. So, and it can't have crackling, popping, or anything like that.
So like a motorcycle, or a dirt bike?
Yep, so dirt, no, dirt bikes falls, dirt bikes fall under decibels, that would be 96 decibels. ATVs, I believe, are 99. I think the four by fours, off-high vehicles are somewhere in 90s too. They used to, and now, most of the mufflers are better, it's the older bikes, the big trick was, the park would do noise checks out there, well, and guys would just go and put a bunch of, they'd pack it with either leaves, or, or like brillo pads, and then they would pass the sound check, and then as soon as they got in there, they'd kick it down, and it would burn it out, and then they'd have their loud exhaust, but they'd pass the sound test. But vehicles on highways, on roadways, falls under 169.69, which is the muffler, which can't be crackling, popping. And, so...
Okay.
Because that was the question I'd asked the actual trooper, can we write under that? And he said, judges tend to rather have a, because it's not the mufflers necessarily making the noise, it's the engine, they prefer to have the ordinance in place to enforce. And I know Hoyt Lakes put one in a few years ago too, because of the logging trucks coming off of Forest 11 and into town down that hill, they were having some problems, so. And truckers tend, or loggers tend to run older, and a lot more powerful vehicles, because they're hauling 112,000 pounds they can carry now, so. So loggers can carry a lot more than even these trucks, these trucks can only run around 98 to 100,000. So, which is still a lot of weight coming down the road at 50 miles an hour.
Yeah, right.
So, so if the council wishes I can work on an ordinance, bring one that looks pretty, pretty similar to everything else out there, that at least we can enforce with, and at least we'll have it potentially in September, but we'll have it for next year, because I foresee probably things just as busy out there.
Yeah, I can see that.
For a couple more years. Looks like he's pretty much got one pulled up right now, so. So, yep, so...
Next council, the next council member.
For the council, so.
So we can have the first reading?
So we can have the first reading?
Yep, yeah, we'll get it going. I just think it's good to have it, because then I can do something, instead of telling citizens, yeah, well, that's what we can do, well, you know.
It's frustrating, I know.
Much appreciated, since I'm right on the hill.
You say you don't hear it.
Yeah, well, you can designate just Sparta, you know.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Attorney Lindsey, then can we use, tonight, if Chief bringing that forward, use this as our proposal to the council, and then our first reading will be the next meeting?
No, because in order to constitute an official introduction, the council members have to have a copy of the written document to have...
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Do we need a motion for this?
I'll make a motion that Chief...
Move.
Second.
Sorry. Moved by Councilor Heitzman, seconded by Councilor Pulis. Any further discussion?
Got you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pulis, say nay. None, motion carries five to zero to have Chief prepare a city ordinance for the Jake braking for next council.
That was the dynamite.
You have anything else?
Apparently, you guys don't like noise. Nope, I saw, I'm seeing them.
I've got a copy of it drafted, I'll forward it to Clerk Soller now.
Perfect. Efficiency, go ahead.
Ty, a question for you, did you ever have that meeting with the chiefs on marijuana sale?
Yeah, we had a discussion, and things are still in early stages. What's kind of ironic is, the state has put together a board, regulatory board for the marijuana. However, it's going to take 18 months for, for this board to get together and start putting things in place, so you will not be able to legally sell marijuana in Minnesota till probably sometime in 2025. And irony, the whole thing is, the law comes, takes place August 1st. So August 1st, you can buy it off the black market, and we're not going to do anything about it, unfortunately. If you cross state lines, it's still a federal crime, and that causes other issues, but let's face it, it's going to already be here, so, but they're still going to be able to grow marijuana plants, so that won't be an issue. Anybody can grow up to eat plants. But yeah, it's going to take a couple of years before I think it's, the states are going to have to worry about it, because they don't, the regulatory board hasn't even decided. They kind of passed the law, and didn't think far enough ahead about the regulatory stuff, so.
Can I jump in on that, just for one moment? Because I, I agree with the chief wholeheartedly. What we've got is a very interesting legal situation, and we, you know, we applaud the state for giving the artisans market a head start, but I just wanted to clarify, where the chief says you can grow eight plants, only four of them can be mature plants at any given time, and your plants have to be secured, so you can't just grow them in the open in your backyard, you can't grow them outside, you have to have them in a place where you can separate them away, so, so just passersby can't access them. So hopefully, people are following through and reading those parts of the new state law as well, but...
What about the THC gummies and stuff, does that apply to the same rule?
The, the rules that relate to the THC gummies are going to change fairly significantly August 1st, when the new law goes into effect, but it's, it's not going to eliminate or, or take away the products, it's going to, it's going to regulate more where and when they can be sold, as opposed to taking them off the market.
So as we talked, did you come up with that draft for everyone to look at then?
I did, I actually, I, I sent the draft ordinance, I sent it to your email, to Clerk Soller, and to the mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
We did have, we actually had a handful of complaints of marijuana smoking over the Fourth of July. Unfortunately, it's still against the law, but if we were to write the tickets, August 1st, they would have been dismissed and expunged anyways, so basically, we're wasting paper to even do it, so really, we couldn't do anything about it. I mean, we really couldn't.
Did you have a lot of firework complaints?
A handful, the guys went out and grabbed on a few of the big, bigger ones, and that kind of quieted things down for us, so, yeah, it was pretty good this year for fireworks, so. I think the fire danger kind of scared some of the people off too a little bit, when they did have a couple of fires around the area that were caused by fireworks, so.
So, another question, what's out there for testing for impairment? Have they gotten, you know, some type of device where they glow into, you know, for alcohol?
Yes, so the state of Minnesota has put aside $16 million for training for officers to go to become what's called DRE, Drug Recognition Experts, which I would suspect that department our size, they'll allow us to send one, you know, will be allowed one, probably, just because of our size department. Elka Sensor is actually working on a preliminary breath test for marijuana. It's, it'll be interesting to see if the courts accept it as a reliable test, but that's a lot of questions that law enforcement has, is it's really hard to prove marijuana impairment. So it's going to be very interesting. The other frustration we're having is the question of, you can now possess methamphetamine pipe, and it can be on your, in your seat, and it's legal. So the question's going to be, if we see a methamphetamine pipe, is that enough for us to conduct a search in the vehicle? So sadly, if you have an open can of beer, I can conduct a search of the vehicle, looking for more open containers. But if you have a meth pipe sitting on the center console, I can't search that vehicle, basically, so.
And that's what I'm wondering.
It has to be less than .4 grams, so, less than 10, basically $10 with a meth, maybe a little less. So, but yeah, so, it's going to be very interesting now that they legalize that. That was one I was pretty disappointed in, because, I mean, that's, we, almost half our DUIs are methamphetamine related DUIs, so. But we still believe if we have a methamphetamine pipe in the middle, that that's enough to pull the individual out to conduct field sobriety tests. So, but it no longer allows us to search the vehicle, so.
What a mess.
Any questions, any further? Thanks, Chief. City Engineer, Sam.
John.
No, just, I'm sorry, John. I'm sorry.
......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Yeah, there was some, you know, there hasn't been much. There, there has been stuff. I mean, you know, gates are closed, it's, you know, closed, but they'll still set it outside the fence. So I know we picked up maybe a, a small truckload, a couple scrap pieces of wood and some plastic pieces. So we were able to get, throw them into the garbage truck and the wood into the burn pile, so. So yeah, I don't know.
And ours has no dumping signs, like five pucks if you understand one on the fence there.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I mean, I didn't think we needed to because the gates are closed.
But unfortunately.
So.
You know, people are.
That's, that's it. I didn't think, I figured they would have enough sense to, if the gates are closed and there's no garbage can there, don't leave your shit, stuff outside the gate, you know, so.
Right.
But I guess they need a sign, so.
Well, hopefully it stops.
Yeah. But other than that, they don't have anything else.
Perfect. Thank you. Campground host, Wendy.
Good evening, everybody. Well, first of all, I wanted to talk about Good Sam. I got in touch with them and they weren't able to come and do their normal looks through the campground. So what we did was I took the phone and I put it on, on video so that I took the golf cart and I drove through the campground, showing them everything, all the sites and the bathroom and, and the different things that we have there. And they took that as their rating, how they're going to rate us. I haven't heard the rating yet, but I did get a quote for the advertising for the Good Sam catalog and the inch and a half. They want a total for everything of 183250. There is a prepay if you pay by September 1st of 175920. And I needed to see if you would approve the Good Sam bid for this advertising. I do get a lot of Good Sam customers in that take advantage of that discount that they get.
I make a motion on it.
Second?
Port. Motion by Councilor Skinsich, supported by Councilor Polis. He beat you again, man. Any further discussion? So we've done this for many years, right?
Yes, yes.
And the price is going to remain in the same old year after year?
No, it goes up.
A lot?
I'm not sure where it was last year. I'm, I don't recall.
Typically, the price is, is similar year after year. I've seen the, it's called an enhanced listing, which is done in the print catalog. That catalog is given out free to all Good Sam slash Camping World members. I don't know how many thousands they distributed to, but it's a fairly significant number. They also have an enhanced digital listing that goes with it as well. So that, so, and I don't remember all of the different kind of search functions, but it does give an online presence as far as referrals to us. So it is one of the things that the campground board has talked about. We haven't had a chance to kind of dive into stuff. I would say it is safe to go ahead and renew it for this year, but as we get into, we get better tools for tracking and stuff like that, that's something we'll be able to get more data on for next year to determine if we want to continue. Typically, the price is going to go up between 5% and 8% per year is what is kind of, that may be a little inaccurate, but that's kind of what you can expect for the prices to go up. That's kind of what it seems to be.
So you say you get discounts, the Good Sam people get discounts?
Yeah, they get a 10% discount.
So we take the hit, we have to take the hit with 10%.
To be, yes, that's one of the requirements of being a quote Good Sam park, is that you have to offer a 10% discount to any Good Sam member.
Okay.
So that, that goes into, we want to know how much, we want to have a better look at the data. Hopefully, we'll get, we will get that either in the existing reservations tool or whatever new one we go to, better tracking to be able to understand how much of that, that discount is diluting our revenue.
Yeah.
And if it's, if it's worth it, if the, if the return on investment is worth it.
Right, yeah. Okay.
All right, well, that was what I had for that. Did we decide to go with it? Then I, all I have to do is, is approve it online for them.
We didn't vote yet.
No, we didn't. So any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And I had a real successful Fourth of July weekend. Of course, we were full, and I had a lot of people calling to last minute, see if they could get in, which they couldn't. I also allow the people who have the reservations this year to book for next year. I do that for Memorial Weekend, Fourth of July Weekend, and Labor Day Weekend. Otherwise, everybody else waits for January 15th. But after, after July 4th this year, I have five sites open for the Fourth of July next year, and that's it. So, yeah, they booked, some of them have booked their 18, 20 years at the same sites.
So, so do they pay a fee for pre-booking like that?
No.
A holding fee or anything?
Well, they, no, they, I cannot take any money in, at all, in 2023 for 2024. I have to wait until, I call them in the spring and get deposits.
Oh, okay.
Because I can't take any money in, in the previous year. So everything's looking good for Call for the Cure. I got the campground ready, so I think it'll be another good, good year with them also, so. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll direct this question back to Sam. You were going to work on those lots for the overflow parking on tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah. Jeff Ward was, he's kind of the head guy for Crawl for the Cure. He's going to be coming up in the morning. I'd expect him here about 9, 10 o'clock. So, well, Wendy made a layout of what we're doing, or kind of who's going where. So we'll lay the, lay the lots out in the field there. I think I got one bathroom coming for that field. So it, it'll all work out really well. I think there's going to be, there's 12 open sites left. So if we get any stragglers through the next four or five days, or three days, I guess, they can go in those sites. And then if we have to make a couple more sites, we got Downby in front of the gray, gray storage garage here, we'll put them in that parking lot, so.
Are you chalking lines or something?
Yeah, I, I am going to paint lines.
Paint lines?
Yep. We'll paint lines and whatnot, and we'll just write, Wendy's got the sites numbered, so we'll write like a number two in that spot where we pull them in and whatnot. So, yep, we'll get her done tomorrow.
So Wendy, just for my curiosity, if somebody asks me, they're looking for a camp spot, is that reserved for Crawl for the Cure yet? Or are those open, even overflow, open to the general public?
No, I'm not taking reservations for anything but Crawl for the Cure for those sites. Those off, off, campground sites. So they're just there for Crawl for the Cure.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions from council? And we'll move to the library director, Sue. Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Yep, we can hear you now.
And you can hear me?
Now, yep.
Okay. Okay, so last Friday, we have the Northern Lights music concert here for everyone. We do this every year. They've been going for 20 years, and this is young proteges that come. We have as young as 11 playing the music, and they're quite awesome. Everyone loved it. We filled the auditorium. This Thursday, the 13th, at 6:30 in the auditorium, we have bubble wonders, and we have a man who can actually step into a bubble. He does amazing things with bubbles, so it's for everyone. Now, all families, grandparents, more than welcome. Of course, always free. And on the 1st of August, at 2:00 in the afternoon, all at high kitchen tables, we have a puppeteer. Now, during this month, I'm handing boxes to the kids, profound objects, which means we start them with some things that have been found or they could find anywhere, and they are to start walking around yards, the sidewalk, through the park, and finding that you would incorporate into your puppet. And it can be anything from a bottle cap, to sunglasses, anything. And on, on August 1st, at 2:00, he will be sitting out there demonstrating to the kids how he does puppetry. Again, free for everyone, just come and enjoy. And that is all we're about. It is just having a lot of fun. And the 1st of August ends our summer reading. Any questions from anybody?
None from me. I think that's, we don't have any questions, Sue. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move on to the advisory boards.
Good evening, council. I'm Mr. Mayor. So this month, we actually did not have quorum, so we weren't able to have a, an actual meeting, but we did have a working session. And we were able to go through a lot of things, a lot of questions about the Crawl for the Cure, which I think we're well in hand for. We did invite the organizers from the crawl to our August 2nd meeting. We're going to be doing an event debrief. We'll be talking about the special event camping area. They originally asked for 50 sites. It looks like we're going to be using 14. So we'll kind of dive into the background behind, you know, what can we expect for next year? Did it work well? I encourage any of the council to stop by this weekend and just kind of make notes on what you're seeing and filter that to us so that we can include it in our debrief. If there's any problems, if there's things that you think worked really well, any of it, we're going to try and consolidate all that information so that we can kind of dive deep into these things and help them prepare for, for 2024. I do also want to note that today, as part of kind of some of the things that the organizers and I and others have been talking about, is encouraging the people that are coming up from this event to buy local. They put out a really good buy local message to their entire, I think they did it on, on social media, and they're really trying to promote people to come up empty and buy gas up here, to use the liquor store, to, you know, go to the bars and things like that. So it was a really, really nice effort on their part, and, and hopefully that will be well received. Hopefully, it'll give businesses a boost, which is kind of the whole point of having the campground to begin with. So, so looking forward to a good crawl. The other thing that I wanted to give you a quick update on is we just had our second demonstration on a reservation platform. This one was Firefly, so we've now done Camp Life, which is the existing one, and we've done Firefly is one, is one that I use at my park. We've got two or three additional ones that we'll be doing in August and early September. And I think we've got, we've learned a lot just through those first two. I imagine we'll continue to learn a lot more as we go through the process. So that's moving along. It's slow, it's tedious. Each one takes about an hour and a half to two hours, and trying to schedule everybody to come together for it can be a little bit of a challenge. So, and the one from last night, and I sent a note out to Jill and the rest of the board, we actually have on YouTube. So if any of you want to see through it, Jill will have the link. If you want to take any of your personal time and look at what some of the things that they do, that will be available. So, and then lastly, because like I said, we had a, a working session, we had a tour, a walking tour of the campground at our last meeting. And so we went through and we looked at a couple of items that we noticed is the existing pavilion is, I think most of us there agreed that is, most of us agreed that it is in need of some work. It's, it's kind of dangerous. It's slipped off of its footing. So that's something that we'll have to look at. The structure of it itself looked great. The roof needs to be redone. It needs to be put, put back on its footings. I know there is plan to put up another pavilion in our plans as well. So we just need to kind of think about those together. I'm not sure what we're going to do as far as getting bids. I'll leave that to Jill and John to figure out the process for that. The walkway to the beach was something that we talked about. Reconnecting the beach is something that the board has talked as this needs to be, it's a, it's a good asset of the campground and for the city, and so reestablishing that connection. We talked about a different, a couple of different ways that we could do that. We also looked at the new campsites that Joel and Sop put together for us, and we came up real quickly with kind of a, we're going to have to go back to them with, with kind of a punch list because there are a number of items that are not complete, that we're certainly in the contract with them. So we're going to have to go through those and make sure that those are actually getting done and we're getting what we paid for. We did have a discussion about tree planting and some tree removal, depending upon which side of the campground we were at. And so I think we've got a couple of follow-ups. We probably won't get it done for this year, but we probably will be able to have a plan that we'll be able to recommend, hopefully, for starting into next season so that we can address some of that. And then the last piece was just the general condition of the roadway, as well as talking about the dump station, potential move or whatever. So there's, there is some work to be done on that as well. So we are continuing to look at all of those, and hopefully we'll have some, some action items to present to you soon. Any questions?
I have one for you, Paul. Thank you. But I do have one for Sammy. That power outlet that's down by the gazebo in the campground is that hot life? Is the power just, I think, to the left of it?
Which one is that? Is that?
The gazebo in the campground.
I don't know.
There's power there.
There is?
Yeah.
Should be looked at because I mess with it. It's not attached to the.
Oh, okay.
If it rained and somebody, and it's not.
We'll have to disconnect it. Yeah, I, I don't know. I'll, I'll go take a look at it tomorrow and we'll get.
Yeah, just wouldn't want anybody to get shocked.
Okay, I'll have some.
Trying to use it.
If I may, Mayor, Sam and I also talked, the beach pavilion probably needs a new roof and some painting. So if we bid them, we'd bid all of them together.
Yeah. Excellent. And Clerk Zoller.
Thank you. I got a couple of issues here. I have had some residents ask about trees being planted right on the property line. A lot of them are doing them on the property line. Sam and I kind of talked and thought, you know, it makes a lot of sense to have a setback for trees. You have, they get bigger, you've got branches growing over, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't know if it's Attorney Lindsay here question whether or not that needs to be done by motion or ordinance, but it's come up a few times for us in the office, and at this point, we really don't have anything to tell them, other than work it out, you know, and that it's a civil issue. But if we could get something maybe a little more concrete on that, that would help us with the residents that are having those issues.
Yes. That type of a change would need to be done by ordinance and specifically by amending the setback charts in our zoning ordinance.
So, question, if you made an ordinance, now is that going to include survey included? Because, you know, there might be dispute with their boundaries, you know?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
If we're amending the ordinance, we can make any amendments that we'd like. I know that the, the survey requirement is one that, that differs between communities, and it's always, you know, it's always a balance between trying to prevent those sorts of boundary line disputes and then also forcing our residents to pay, you know, surveys are climbing in cost. Right now, you're looking probably between 15 and $2,500 to get a full survey done. And if we require that, it may discourage people from doing smaller projects, or more concerningly, may discourage people from telling us about smaller projects. And it's just a, a balance.
Yeah, that's right. If you have setbacks on trees, now you have the dispute at the boundary line, too.
More of a civil matter, no matter what?
That's all we have now.
From there, back to the utility billing update, we only had two people actually follow through. We'd like to interview a minimum of three. I spoke with Councilor Skinsich. He's still willing to be on the committee. And I was thinking that just due to the circumstances, I'd like to suggest that maybe we seek outside of Gilbert for our committee and use Evelyn City Clerk. Virginia actually has a utility biller that we could seek, that I could contact and see if the three of them would be willing to be on the hiring committee. It takes it out of the city altogether, and I think that's the best at, at this point. And then I'd like to re-advertise. So I think I would need a motion to do that, or.
Do you have any input?
No, I'm fine with it. Yeah, like she had, I can't remember if it was the last week, I think.
That's correct.
No, I'm fine with that.
I'll move then.
Other people.
Then we're just doing the three, or we're going to do?
I think three being that if we do outside of the person, and then of course, we'd want someone on our council, just because we want to make sure the process is followed. But I know Jackie has told in the past, anything we need from Evelyn, you know, again, she's a clerk, she'll know what to look for. And the Virginia utility system is actually the same system we use. So I think looking for someone for those, those positions that know what needs to be done is best. And then it takes, you know, all of the familial and all of us working together. It just takes that thought of the equation.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilor Polis, supported by Councilor Heitzman to repost the position for billing clerk, and we will pick the.
Hiring committee.
Hiring committee as, as they announce that they're willing to participate.
Perfect. And, oh, wait, sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries 5-0.
The next is the hiring committee for the administrative assistant. We can do the same path. Otherwise, I know, Mayor, you and I have talked, administrative assistant's a little more of an entry-level position, not as much skills required. It's easier to learn. I think Councilman Ponten, you agreed, Mayor and myself could, could do that one, or we can go outside the city for that as well.
Do you have any issues with that, Councilman Ponton? No, I'll, I'll do that. Did you have a date set for that?
I have not. I was waiting for the hiring committee. We do have, I think it was four or five apple cans. I think it's, I think it was four or five. So we've got a good pool.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilor Polis, supported by Councilor Skinsich, to have Councilman Ponton, myself, and Clerk Zoller as the hiring committee. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Finances. Campground currently has $106,633.40. General has currently $526,884. And after all of these bills, we'll have about $312,134. I want to make note, we are completely current on Kubota, StanTech, and Magni, and all but one invoice for SCH. So that's about $476,000 just between StanTech and Magni that we're closing on the 18th for that additional funding that we've asked for, that we can submit right away for reimbursement. Unfortunately, being we're closing on the 18th, we probably won't see reimbursement until the end of August. However, it's a huge chunk of money that we're looking to get reimbursed for. So that's where we're sitting there. So that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. We'll move on to the old business, the wastewater treatment plant and water treatment plant update.
There's really not much happening down at the wastewater plant. Everything's running, you know, normally. I know Magni's looking at some startup dates here in the middle of August, when they get some openings to come back and finish up some of the, some of the work that they need to do. But as far as I know, everything's running, you know, pretty good down there as far as the Kubota system, so. Wastewater plant, I know they did the borings, or the, the water plant, water treatment plant. I know they went out there and did the borings, I think almost two weeks ago. I know the water is only about four to six feet down. So I, I don't know what, I haven't heard from Kevin Young with SCH on, on if plans have changed or what, what the idea is. So, but yeah, everything's still moving forward, so.
Excellent. Any other issues with the smell down there at the wastewater treatment plant, or did that treatment work?
Oh, I know the treatment worked, plus then it did dry up. So I know Tara sprayed over three quarters of it, or half of it, or something like that, so. But yeah, I think it, you know, it dried up, and now it's still dry, I would think. So unless that treatment did help, so.
Excellent. Yeah, I've not heard of any complaints, so I just assumed, but excellent. Then we have the approved plumbing purchase agreement, Resolution 2023-15.
You can, Mayor, or if you'd like, I can read it, if that's easier for you.
I'll let you read it.
So I've got the resolution, and I'll just read the body of the resolution. Resolved by the City Council of the City of Gilbert, a political subdivision under the laws of the state of Minnesota at its meeting of July 11th, 2023, as follows. That the City of Gilbert is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to consummate the sale of the property located in St. Louis County, Minnesota, and legally described as follows, comma, to wit, and then it indicates legal description to govern, to Melvin Freeman Highway 135 Revocable Trust stated April 29th, 2023, for the sum of $1, pursuant to the terms and conditions contained in that certain development agreement dated May 23rd, 2023, buy-in between the parties here, too, a copy of which is attached here, too, as Exhibit A, and made a part hereof. And then that development agreement that was previously approved and executed is attached, and the legal description that referenced the legal description incorporates the legal description from that development agreement. And that is the resolution.
Is that all we have to do with that one, then?
Correct. We would just move the resolution, and once approved, that would complete what we need to do.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Moved by Counsel Skinsich, seconded by Counsel Polis to approve the Resolution 2023-15. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries five zero.
Mayor, if I may, if we could then at the same time approve 2023-20, which gives us the resolution authorizing the City of Gilbert to make application to and accept funds from the fiscal year 2024 Development Infrastructure Fund Program from the IRRB. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Yeah.
Whereas the authorizing authority approves of the attached application for the City of Gilbert Development Infrastructure Project, and whereas the authorizing authority agrees to accept funding to the underlying project if approved by IRRB, albeit resolved that the authorizing authority of the City of Gilbert does adopt this resolution upon vote taken, the following voted for, against, absent, which we will do here in a moment, whereupon Resolution Number 2023-20 was declared duly passed and adopted this 11th day of July 2023.
I'll make that motion. Support?
Motion by Counsel Heitzman, supported by Counsel Polis for Resolution 2023-20. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries five zero.
Mayor, I can read that one into the record if you'd like.
Please do.
Resolution resolved by the City Council of the City of Gilbert, a political subdivision under the laws of the state of Minnesota at its meeting of June 13, 2023, as follows. That the City of Gilbert is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to consummate the purchase of property located in St. Louis County, Minnesota, and legally described as follows, to wit, Lot 7, Block 1, Lake Orbigan, according to the original plat thereof, on file and of record in the Office of the County Reporter in and for St. Louis County, Minnesota, accepting mineral rights, minerals and mineral rights, if any, subject to easements, conditions, and restrictions of record, parcel code 060011000070, from Keith F. Brown and Susan M. Brown, husband and wife, for the sum of $6,500, less legal fees and expenses. And that one, that action had previously been adopted, so we can just ratify by passing this resolution.
Move. Part.
Moved by Counsel Polis, supported by Counsel Heitzman to accept Resolution 2023-16. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries five zero. And then, I sure made a mess of this.
Back. Yeah, it is.
Resolution 2023-18.
Seven.
I got one seven. My apologies.
And Mayor, if you'd like, I can read this one in as well.
Please do.
Resolution resolved by the City Council of the City of Gilbert, a political subdivision under the laws of the state of Minnesota at its meeting of July 11th, 2023, as follows. That the City of Gilbert is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to consummate the sale of property located in St. Louis County, Minnesota, and legally described as follows, to wit, Outlot E., Lake Orbigan, according to the original plat thereof, on file and of record in the Office of the County Reporter in and for St. Louis County, Minnesota, except minerals and mineral rights, if any, subject to easements, conditions, and restrictions of record, from Michael Crepp and Yvonne G. Crepp, husband and wife, to David Gavitt and Amy Gavitt, subject to the following conditions. The proceeds of said real estate transaction shall be divided as follows. All verified out-of-pocket expenses paid by Michael Crepp and Yvonne Crepp that have been approved by the City of Gilbert shall be reimbursed to Michael Crepp and Yvonne G. Crepp, husband and wife. The net proceeds of the contemplated real estate transaction shall be divided as follows. 25% to the City of Gilbert, 75% to Michael Crepp and Yvonne Crepp. A settlement agreement and release containing the provisions outlined above shall be signed by the City of Gilbert and Michael Crepp and Yvonne Crepp. Upon execution of said settlement agreement and release, and once the subject conditions have been met, the City of Gilbert will release Michael Crepp and Yvonne Crepp from any and all provisions and conditions contained in the development agreement filed March 5th, 2009, as document number 1102438.
Move. Support.
Moved by Counsel Heitzman, excuse me, supported by Counsel Polis. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries to, for Resolution 2023-17. I think I have Resolution 2023-18.
If I may. This one is for, I believe it is Ramona Diercheck, I think is how her last name is spelled. I did do a preliminary resolution, however, after we've discussed in our previous meeting, if you look on the map attached, it does go beyond the rectangle parcel she pointed out to us in her offer. So the city needs to decide how we will address the reparsaling of this. As this one actually goes, it looks like kind of a home plate, if you will. But I believe she only wants the rectangle grass portion. So before we can approve that, we need to decide how we'll reparse that, if that would be on her or us. Attorney Lindsey?
Thank you. And I did have a draft resolution, and I can, so the lower portion, typically what we do in this situation when, or what I've seen done most commonly, is if a resident wants to purchase a portion of a lot, but not the entire lot, we include language, the following language. So we say, "A portion of the parcel code, a copy of the St. Louis County floor print of being attached to this resolution hereby made a part hereof contingent on buyer obtaining a survey to determine the legal description to be utilized in connection with this transaction and obtaining necessary permits and documentations in order to divide the existing tax parcel at the sole expense of the buyer." So basically, we authorize the transfer contingent upon them doing the legwork and incurring the expense to develop the legal description to separate the parcels. And ultimately, the city is in control of the approval of the split, so so long as they bring us a good legal, it shouldn't be an issue.
Do we have to determine what we want in that, though? Because?
She, her proposal was 1,000 for that arcade, so we're, we're, that's.
And that's the parcel with the garage on it, then?
No, that's not.
That's not, gotcha.
This is just an empty log.
Yep.
Looks like she's been maintaining it for years, and it's green space. Wants to just move on it.
It appears by the land explorer that she's looking for the portion of it that would extend her yard.
Yes. Gotcha.
Need a motion?
I believe so.
I'll move. Support?
Moved by Counsel Polis, supported by Counsel Heitzman. Any further discussion?
I've got one thing, I guess, just.
Yes.
Do we need to include in there any kind of language for surveying the property, I guess, before the sale would go through? Or how do you want to, how would we do that?
So the way that the resolution that I've got prepared, the way that it works, is the city will, by passing the resolution, authorizes the transaction, but the transaction can't be completed until that, until the legal description is developed for the actual purchase parcel.
Okay.
So before we can close the transaction, that information would be need to be brought to us. But it's an assurance to the buyer that once they bring it to us, the transaction will close.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
So it's contingent on them bringing us the legal document, illegal description.
Makes it worth her getting a survey done, because she knows that it's.
Correct.
A slam dunk at that point. Fair enough.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries five zero. Resolution 2023-18, pending the legal. Resolution 2023-19.
This one is for Kimberly Masson. There is some question on this one as well, as far as the parcel goes, covers where we kind of put our sand pile, so again, it would need to be adjusted as far as the parcel itself. But then there's been some question in our previous meeting as far as the garage that is in the portion that she is looking for. I think we had some question, and maybe Sam can answer whether or not, are we using it as a city, or?
Not a garage.
Okay. So is it empty? Do you know, or does she have stuff in it?
I think she has stuff in it.
So then there was a question as to the integrity of the structure, blight looking, up to date, if we want to put language into that, or how you want to view that. So those were the questions brought earlier. And her proposed offer was 500.
What is she actually looking at, then? Because I mean, I'm seeing this, it's got a circle.
Yeah. It's.
And I know the way that there's that, I think there's two garages side by side there with an alley going down.
Yeah, so she's kind of looking more towards, it would look like a square with a chunk of the corner out. I think it's a better one in the packet.
And I drove by today, and if you look at that, you know, the garage, maybe it could be rehabilitated, or else it should be torn down, because it's a blight-looking garage, you know. So then there should be some language in there somehow.
I can see it on this one.
You know, to, you know, deal with that.
I believe this started like a year or so ago. I think we started on that lower section down there, trying to get them more squared or something to that effect, and remember hearing about it.
If I remember, I guess if I didn't mind, I remember this, this was a few years ago, this came about. That household had always used that garage, and I don't know how it came, if somebody was looking at boundaries and found out that that garage wasn't even on their property.
So that's city property right now?
Yeah. It's always been, but they've always treated it like their own property with a garage on it. Somebody back in the 1900s, early 1900s. Yeah, I don't know.
Oof, that's a lot of time.
It's a tin garage. The other garage is wood, but it's a tin garage in the alley there, right behind Wyper.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I think what we'd want to do, number one, we would include the same contingency within this resolution as the last, because my review of it, it appears it's going to result in a parcel split. And so we're going to want to put the onus to obtain the survey and undertake that parcel split on the buyer. And then the other thing that I would personally want to see in there is basically just an as-is, where-is clause, that the city makes no representation as to the fitness of the structure, and that they take it in the condition that it is, and they understand that that structure is subject to the, to the local ordinance is related to blight, and that the property owner, because of the use that they've made of it historically, and because of just the situation wherein, they will be responsible, and you know, it ultimately may end up being torn down. But just give them that information as a heads up before they buy it.
And another issue is the dollar amount. You know, we've been, they're only offering 500, and, you know, everybody else was selling for 1,000.
Is that lot size comparable to the lot size up on top by the school in New Jersey that she was planning a garden?
I didn't put the area, or did I put the area on there in the one? I think they're both under like .11, you know, they're not very big.
Yeah. So it looks like it, though, because it looks like it's about, well, it's two lots wide, deep.
Right.
We carved out the Micaletti piece a number of years ago, and I remember we did something for the Masson property, and I don't know who lives on the corner by the alley there, but, you know, it seems like there's some paperwork I'll dig up on this hall, where it made sense for what the city was going to retain for the alley and their, you know, your sand pile in that area, too, so. City has an interest, Brian, to make sure they have retained what they need for their book, you know, for their city property there.
When we saw.
And I think we've got it all, so I'll get that to Jill this week here.
That parcel down by the car wash with that garage and shed on it, did we do that for 500? Does anybody remember?
I don't.
Nope, it was at the car wash, folks themselves.
That rings a bell to me.
So I would, I would make a motion for it for 500 bucks. Contingent on, you know, the boundaries or whatever, but.
And it seems like John may have some paperwork already on.
That parcel down by the car wash with that garage and shed on it, did we do that for 500? Does anybody remember?
I don't.
Nope, it was at the car wash, folks themselves.
That rings a bell to me.
So I would, I would make a motion for it for 500 bucks. Contingent on, you know, the boundaries or whatever, but...
And it seems like John may have some paperwork already on that. So I'll support that motion.
Yeah, so maybe after all the closing costs are met by the buyer, and we get the 500 dollars clear after all those expenses. I'd agree to that.
So motion by Counselor Skinsich, supported by Counselor Heitzman, for Resolution 2023-19, pending the legal documentation and the property surveyed. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries five zero. And that was for the sale amount of 500 dollars. Did I cover all of them now?
I think so.
How about that, one on Indiana?
Yeah, there's a garage.
Pardon?
Is that... That's... Planning and zoning. And that's Ramona? No.
Dana.
Is a solder, that one will require approval from the council or a revised plan, as they do not need the five-foot setback. And then we had for White, they are proposing to add a hot tub enclosure. Code currently allows for one accessory structure, and there's already a garage, so the council, or planning and zoning would like the council to clarify if this is acceptable, and how we want to act on these, whether it's a variance request, or what process we want to go for those three. Just a little background, just with us not having a full planning and zoning, that's why we're bringing them to council, as they are not going to be able to have a quorum, so we want some action on these for those individuals.
Yeah, you know, I think the variance is the way to go on these two properties, but as far as that solder property, there's no setback. I mean, that's right on the boundary, and the only way to get that done is to have your neighbors, you know, approve it. But it's actually, they want to put that carport right on the property line, which I don't know if we want to, you know, get into that with a variance.
Which is the, the address of the...
Solder property?
Yeah, the solder, maybe, like in the diagram, oh, here we are.
Here's, here's what they're doing, see? And this is their property land, and that's where they're putting the carport. And they only have a 35-foot wide lot to begin with, and they're right on this property. Boy, so a variance could work, but boy, you're asking a lot of your neighbor. I, I don't know if they're going to get permission through a variance.
So this would be right on the line, then?
Yeah.
I guess if their neighbor doesn't have a problem with it.
Yeah, that would be my response, too, if their neighbor doesn't have a problem with it, I don't have a problem.
Through the variance.
Right, right. Through the variance. And for the, the enclosure for the hot tub, yeah.
Again, the neighbors don't care, then why should they?
No one cares, then why would I?
Yeah, right.
You want to build something to make your hot tub better and more usable, by all, by all means do that.
Yeah, that's all I feel too, yeah.
Or we're going to stop it. We've had a 1980 citation, sit in the middle of a lot since 1984. We should approve a hot tub enclosure. But that's with neighborly consent.
Comes with a variance.
Comes with the variance.
Yeah, right.
Do we do the motion?
With the variance, then?
So what do, what is the process with the variance? Do we need, just send letter? Do we send letter, or do they contact? What do we use for proof in, in our end?
Once we receive the application, the city likely should send out notice to neighbors within a certain, and there should be a distance specified within the ordinance. We notify the neighbors and, and give them an opportunity to be heard.
For a hearing. Yeah. And that hearing would take place at the next planning and zoning, even though we don't have a quorum? You know, how is that, or it's got to come to the council, then?
Correct. If, if we can't get the, if, if the planning and zoning can't accomplish a quorum to undertake the public hearing, the council can always do that, because we've always got to remember that the planning and zoning is, discharges a function, or assists the council in gathering information. The council can always gather that information itself.
Could we set aside time in a working session to acknowledge that hearing? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, absolutely, it could be held within the context of a working session.
So we could set it up for the next council working session, then we can vote on it right away, accept it at the meeting?
Yep.
Right.
All right, do I need to make a motion?
But you have to, but you have to give enough time to vote, do you have to put it in the paper? That's another question, for the variance.
I'll have to double check. I don't believe you do. I think there's, the requirement is that you make specific notice to the properties affected within a certain distance, but I'll, I'll verify that. And what, what we could do is we could just make a motion directing city staff to, to set up public hearing on the variance for the next, for the next meeting, and to provide notice to all who's, all who are entitled. And that would cover whether it's got to be published in the paper, or just sent by letter.
And, and I think there's something in our ordinance is about as far as contacting neighbors within 200 feet, or, or whatever the language is, I'm not sure. But I think that's all explained in the ordinance, the variance ordinance.
Another question for you, Mr. Lindsey, is who's allowed to object? I mean, is anybody in town allowed to object to this, or is it only those neighbors within that 200-foot?
So theoretically, the, the hearing, the public hearing is a public hearing. Anyone who'd like to can come in and object. The, the key concept to keep in mind, though, is that the objections of a neighbor aren't controlling upon the body. It's informative or informational to the body, and it's something that should be taken into consideration. But in order to grant the variance, you act, the, the council or the planning and zoning actually needs to make some specific findings on some specific factors. And those, those findings on the factors are controlling, as opposed to any individual piece of input.
So we can overrule any objection with council vote?
Correct. Basically, any, any member of the public who comes in and provides their input, we, we should say thank you for your input, we'll take it into consideration as we make the larger decision.
But the council has final decision.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So for these variances, we can do them all at the same time?
All move.
I did that already.
Moved by Counselor Heitzman, supported by Counselor Polis, to allow city staff to schedule a public hearing for the variances regarding White's sauna enclosure, and it was this...
Sauna.
Mr. Mayor.
Or sauna, hot tub.
It's sauna.
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 Hot tub.
Hot tub.
Didn't even get the device right, bro, and everybody's riding you.
Sauna.
You're on the range.
What, do you live in LA? Sauna.
Never had one, so I don't know what it is.
There could be a backlash for this. Fintown is coming for you.
And then for the variance on the Dana Grayak fence?
It was Diana, or Diana Solder, or their portable...
Dwayne, Dwayne Solder, you got it.
Dwayne Solder, okay. Yeah, for the portable garage. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries five zero.
And then for the garage, we just did approval, right on the line, I have no sign issues, so it's between the house and the garage, basically, so.
Yeah.
And I think there used to be a fence there at one time, years ago, many, many years ago. I'll make a motion for that.
Support. Motion by Counselor Skinsich, supported by Counselor Polis, to approve the fence for Dana Grayak. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries five zero. And that's at 101 Indiana Avenue West. Okay. That takes care of that packet?
No.
All right, that's for, on to new business. We'll do the closed session last. We'll do the parcel 0600020-dash, no, we did that.
Did that.
18 and 19, sorry. Welcome to Gilbert, votes, sign quote options.
I have something to say about that, if, you know, before we get into discussion. You know, my wife and I, you know, painted what was peeling and stuff, and we're willing to keep that up, and I think that we could go another two, three years possibly, just by touching up with paint, so I don't think you need to really do anything more on that. It looks good now.
You're talking the sign coming into town?
Yeah.
You guys did, yeah, I did. In fact, I was going to make a comment about that. I thought maybe somebody redid the sign.
No, we just peeled off the peeling parts and then painted over what it was.
Oh, I see.
And we, we can do that for the next couple of years and probably make that sign last for...
It looks good.
Yeah, it did look good, didn't even...
Yeah, so you don't really need to do anything.
I vote we table the sign quote options indefinitely, then. Support.
Thank you, Mr. Poten.
Moved by Counselor Heitzman, supported by Counselor Polis, to table the welcome Gilbert sign repair from graphics by Mark. Any further discussion?
Yes, thank you to Bob and Joe Poten for taking the time and energy to go do that.
And thanks, Sammy, for getting the quotes on it, looking into it, but... Any further discussion? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries five zero. I am responding renewal, first responder subscription. It's the emergency notification and response system services for the Gilbert first responders. This is a stepped yearly payment plan, this is three of five. Council previously approved the renewal agreement in the amount of $660.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Counselor Heitzman.
All support.
Supported by Counselor Skin, Skinsich, to go ahead with the payment of $660 for the first responder emergency service marketing. I am responding. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, okay. Got lost in my own thought there.
That would get to me all the time.
Yeah, tell me about it. Okay, then action from the working session.
So I guess I have to make a motion to go into closed session? Is that where we're at? What is, uh, Dan Tinks, the...
Oh, I think we all agreed that we want the product paid for, right?
Fix it.
Fix it.
The, the roof.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, Jim, we got to get what we asked for.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Polis.
All support.
Supported by Counselor Skinsich, to have the city address Dan Tinks to request that we get the pitched roof we requested. Any further discussion?
Now, when we do this, now, all the costs go on them, right? We shouldn't incur anything?
I would assume.
Right, Brian? Okay, just making that clear.
So, yeah.
And that's what you're really good with, Sam? Ultimately, that's what we should be having?
I think so, yes.
Your opinion's important to me, so that's why I ask.
They did ask or request that we would accept, what was it, 30,000? And then an extended warranty to 30 years?
20.
20 years.
I mean, 20 years, sorry.
From 10 years to 20, plus the 30 grand. Or hold them accountable to make the roof project complete the way it was quoted, or spec'd, not quoted, spec'd.
They did say they would increase up to $50,000, so the, the dollar amount was increasing, but...
We still don't think...
The bottom line...
We're still getting something we don't want.
And they admit fault.
So, so on the repair, they're going to leave the foam that's in place, and then just put the concave foam on top, and then redo the rubber? They're going to take the rubber off? Are they going to reuse that rubber?
No, they, they can't reuse it.
You got to redo it, he said.
It'll be different.
Okay.
And that's unfortunate, and I'm sorry, man, really am, but there is a reason that we got it tempted to begin with.
Right.
I don't, that'll be their issue, unfortunately.
Well, the contractor's insurance that they would have done that, or, you know, it's paid for, if they had ruined the water tank, or something like that, it doesn't insure their workmanship.
The problem was, is I believe it was a sub they hired, and they gave the sub the wrong instructions.
Which still falls on them.
So it's not the subcontractor, it's the...
Right, and that's why there's no insurance or nothing, that, that they created lack of, they just forgot to give the, the right specs.
So who was the inspector on the job, that tank?
KLM.
But they, they weren't the tank people, that representative now? That wasn't KLM here?
No, that was...
So really, the inspector should be at some fault there, too.
Yeah.
So we've never even talked about that part.
Well, that's between them, yeah.
I guess they go after the inspector, that's still, that's them. Yeah, I know, but I'm just curious how this is going to work.
I mean, it's not like it's Main Street by Wabick or anything, but come on.
We did withhold, though, from KLM 5%, which we have not paid them, so do we move forward with paying that portion to KLM? Or do we wait until we're satisfied and it's complete?
Yes.
Mayor, I would recommend holding until the project is fully complete.
Good enough.
Perfect. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries five zero.
Now do I make a motion to go into closed session? I make a motion to go into...
Motion by Counselor Heitzman, supported by Counselor Polis, will go into a closed session to discuss contract employees handbook.
Oh, jeez, we stay here?
I make a motion to readjourn the meeting.
Second?
Motion by Counselor Heitzman, supported by Counselor Polis, to readjourn our meeting at 9:05 PM. All in favor, say aye.
Did I get the word right?
Reconvene.
Reconvene.
Okay.
Yeah, we got the...
Yeah, readjourn, I said it too. Reconvene at 9:05. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries five zero. So leaving off...
Roll call.
Ah, roll call, please.
No, we're, we're just...
No?
We're bringing the, the meeting back into order. It's, it's, we just, basically, like, we took a short break.
That was a long break.
Okay, yeah, it was. All right, so we're good to go, so we... I can never keep my papers straight. There it is.
We got Randy's.
So... Looking at Randy's contract. I have a motion, move to accept.
Support.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Heitzman, to accept the independent contract agreement between Randy...
Parkerhurst?
Park, Parkhurst?
Parkerhurst?
Parkerhurst, uh... Employment, uh, was there a duration on this? I didn't, is it yearly?
I believe it's yearly, yes. I believe it's yearly, yes, because as a contractor.
Yearly contract in the amount of $2,000 a month. Any further discussion?
Did you look at it? Ryan?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. No problem. Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. None. And then for the clerk position, deputy clerk position and chief, chief of police position, those positions are to be evaluated and will pen, reviewing their contracts after the evaluation at a further date. Did that cover it? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. None. Motion carries 5-0. And I believe-
One last, is there any reason to keep that organ in our council chambers?
I don't think it works.
I think Ty wants it in his office.
Oh, that's funny. I know Rocco Leoni had talked about it, that he might want it. So I make a motion that Sam come and deliver it to former councillor-
If you want.
I don't know if he does anymore. No, I'm sorry, I can't.
We would have to declare a surplus by resolution.
Okay.
I believe it actually belongs to the senior center, not to us.
It looks good there. Oh, yes. I'll bet, I'll bet. We could have a discussion with them, what they want to do with it if it's not working.
Just, just one thing before we close about that hearing that we're going to have with the departments and, you know, for the fees bases that we're going to charge. Ryan, is, is there, have you been, you know, working on that as far as setting a time to get together with a special hearing for these people to, you know, when we're going to be charging them these base fees for the apartments and duplexes?
Utility.
Utility.
Yep.
Do we, are we, do we have a timeline on that yet?
I don't have it with me tonight. The file is back at the office, but-
But you are working on it, so it will be within maybe July? Would we have a hearing before the end of July?
The hearing probably wouldn't happen before the end of July, but very first part of August, I'm sure.
Okay, that's, that's all I want, that's, that's all I get.
Perfect. Do we have any other miscellaneous announcements?
No.
No, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Moved by Councillor Polis. You got a mistake?
Support.
Supported by Councillor Heitzman, to adjourn our city council meeting at 9:00, 9:10 PM. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. None. Motion carries 5-0. Meeting adjourned.